Senator John McCain.
Well, thanks a lot, Bob. You could have taken longer. Could I mention that there are four chairs here? If someone would like to come up and sit down there, I'd be more than happy to look at you. Please come. Come on. Come on. Don't be shy. Come on. All right. First of all, thank you all. I want to, I've just had a good meeting with the mayors of the West Valley to thank them for their continued support of Luke Air Force Base. They know how important it is to support this wonderful installation that provides so much for our nation's security. By the way, my favorite mayor's story concerns an old and dear and beloved mayor of Scottsdale, a friend of ours named Herb Drinkwater. Like many of our mayors here, he would, has had his name and phone number in the phone book. And one night at 2:00 AM, the phone rang and he answered the phone and some guy who had a problem that he wanted addressed. And so Herb took down his name and his phone number and said, "I'll get back to you." And the next night Herb called him up at 2:00 AM. And said, "I've got the answer to your problem." He said, "I knew you'd be up." And by the way, my favorite governor's story is the story of the two inmates in the state prison in the chow line. And one of them turned to the other one and said, "The food was a lot better in here when you were governor." I tried that joke in Illinois. It was, it was, it was not well received. Can I say thank you for being here? Thank you for your participation in what I enjoy most and appreciate the most. And I'm here to respond to any question, comment, or insult that you might have. First of all, in case you missed it, there was a poll in the last couple of days that showed the approval rating of Congress at 11%. Well, I think that shows we're down to paid staffers and blood relatives. And if there's anyone here who is in that 11% approval Congress, I'd like to meet you because I'd like to ask you what you like. So I want to again thank all of you for being here. These are difficult times. And the issue that I'd like to talk to you about, and then talk to you about anything that's on your mind, is this issue that can so much, have so much effect here in the West Valley, and that is these pending, quote, "sequestration" defense cuts which are of enormous impact. And have no doubt, if these cuts, which are scheduled to take place on the 1st of January 2013, it'll affect the West Valley, it'll affect the East Side, it'll affect Tucson, it'll affect Raytheon down in Tucson, it'll affect Boeing out in Mesa where that wonderful Apache helicopter is made, and clearly it will affect Luke Air Force Base. And so first of all, there was a study, let me tell you how it came about very briefly. The Congress in its wisdom, along with the President, decided that we would have a supercommittee that would come to a decision that would cut our deficit, make tough decisions a bipartisan basis. And as a incentive for them to come to agreement, there was put in that if they didn't agree, there would be $1.2 trillion in automatic cuts. In other words, a MEDEX approach. Well, they made no agreement, and so now these cuts are scheduled to kick in on the 1st of January 2013. Now, and according to, according to a George Mason study, that would be a million defense jobs. Now here's what the Secretary of Defense has said. I'm not asking you to take my word of the effects. These are the words of the Secretary of Defense and those of General Dempsey, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. The mechanism, and then, back up a second. We have, on one of, I have a crack team here, a work release program. Would you go back, go back one here? Okay, thank you. "The mechanism would force defense cuts that would do catastrophic damage to our military and its ability to protect this country." Now that's the words of the President's appointed Secretary of Defense, okay? And those are the words of the Chairman, Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. Now the next And this is the Chief of Naval Operations and General Odierno. So this, we are facing a very serious situation. Now could you go to the next slide, please? Now, this George Mason study says that this is the effect, and no one has disputed the findings of the study, by the way, is 35,000 jobs in Arizona and $3 billion be taken out of the, of the state. Well, I think we are seeing, I think from talking with our mayors and city council, that we are starting to see some movement out of the severe recession we've been in, some housing, bright, a little bit of good information. But, and we may be coming out of this recession. You do this to the state of Arizona, my friends, and we're right back, we're right back into it. So what do we need to do? We need to sit down together, Republican and Democrat, with the President's leadership, and do what's necessary to resolve this. Now, there can be savings made, and there should be savings made in national defense. By the way, this cut is on top of $460 billion in reductions in defense that is already scheduled, including reducing the United States Army by some 100,000 personnel, cutting the Marine Corps by some 80,000. So it's not as if we are not already enacting reductions. But you pile 500, $480 billion on top of that, and you get the results that those individuals said, that I just showed you on, on the screen. So we need to sit down, Republican and Democrat and the President, and avert this. But if you're gonna enact savings, and we need to enact savings, you do it with a scalpel. And on the non-defense side, by the way, these cuts, everything is treated the same. And you know that not everything is the same. I don't think there's many of us here that want to cut breast cancer research. I don't think there's many of us here, especially guys like me, that want to cut medical research on Alzheimer's. So I think that what we need to do, and the reason why I and some other senators have been traveling around the country, is to make people aware of what's gonna happen unless we stop this. Now, the American people expect better of us. They expect better of us. And the only way we're gonna have that happen is enough American citizens say, "You've got to act." The President's first responsibility as President of the United States is Commander-in-Chief, okay? And it seems to me, if the Commander-in-Chief is being told by his Secretary of Defense what would happen, as you just saw on that screen, then it should be the President's highest priority. So we have, a lot of us have said, "Mr. President, we'll come over and sit down and we'll fix this." And I'd like to remind you, there have been several times in history where Republicans and Democrats and Presidents of both parties have gotten together to solve problems that are, that are enormous facing this country. And that's what I think we need to do. So I think we need to have our voices heard, and we need, because that's what democracy is supposed to be all about. And I urge your involvement in this national debate, not only for the economy of Arizona, but most importantly, for the defense of this nation. There are men and women in this room who have already served their country in uniform, many of them at great sacrifice. We can't, we can't throw that all away. We've suffered a lot of losses of American blood and treasure in places like Iraq and Afghanistan, most recently. We can't allow Al Qaeda to come back. We can't allow the Russians to act the way that they are behaving in supporting the Syrians who are being massacred. We can't afford to allow China to grow unchecked without any alliances to counter some of their ambitions that they have. And especially, obviously, as you know, the Iranians continue on the path to development of a nuclear weapon. They have been hurt economically, but there is no sign that they have changed the path to developing a nuclear weapon. And as you know, they have said they want to, quote, "wipe Israel off the map." That is a looming crisis, that the best way to counter that crisis and them is with a very strong, well-equipped professional military, which could be damaged by this. So with that, I'd like to say thank you for coming again. Don't forget that there, in about 70-some days, there is going to be an election. And please remember the words of the late Mayor Daley of Chicago, who once said, "Vote early and vote often." Thank you very much for, for being here. And we have microphones, I think. Yeah, there's it, crack staff. Yes, sir. Go ahead. And as I said, I'd be glad to discuss any issue with you. Go ahead.
Thank you for being here. It's an honor to speak with you. I think you're a real American hero.
Thank you. Next time I'll have you introduce me instead.
Yeah. That being said, you're still a member of Congress, and I'm not part of the delusional 11%. And I think my granddaughter's future and well-being and standard of living is in jeopardy right now. And it's because of the deficit that we have in the United States. It's $1.1 trillion as of this morning's paper.
By the way, could I, could I just interrupt a second?
Yeah.
As you also saw on the morning paper, the Congressional Budget Office has talked about the devastating effects of us doing nothing, including their prediction that unemployment would go back up to 9.1%. Please go ahead.
Right. I was in the Marine Corps, so I'm for a strong defense, obviously. But I also think that the, the biggest danger to my granddaughter's well-being is comes within the defense, the deficit. In October of 10, the Bowles-Simpson Committee came out with a plan that, in my ignorance, thought was a pretty reasonable plan. That hasn't even got a whisper in Congress. What's so repugnant about that plan that you won't even discuss it?
First of all, thank you for your service in the Marine Corps. I once said that when I graduated from the Naval Academy, I tried to get in the Marine Corps, but my parents were married. But then, 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 then my son, Jim, joins the Marine Corps and serves in combat in Iraq for, in Anbar Province as a Lance Corporal. And he said to me, he said, "You know, Dad," he said, "the Marines are part of the Navy Department, the men's department." So he had a very, so you are right, you are right. No nation can have a strong national defense over time without a, a sound economy. You are exactly right. And I think we need to make further dramatic cuts, frankly, and tough decisions, because we cannot continue this trillion-dollar-a-year debt that's going on. We cannot do that. And we have to tell the American people that. And we have to give them some straight talk and say, "We've got to make some reductions." You referred to the Bowles-Simpson Commission. My friends, it was a commission set up by the President with Erskine Bowles, who was former Chief of Staff to President Clinton, and Alan Simpson, who was a former senator from Wyoming. And so, and some very highly respected people. They came up with a plan which is very reasonable, but it has tough decisions in it. And the President refused, would appoint it, refused to endorse it. Members of Congress refused to endorse it. But every time we talk seriously about addressing the deficit, you know what pops up in the conversation? Simpson-Bowles, Bowles-Simpson, whichever. Because that does provide us with a blueprint to move forward to get this deficit under control. My friends, I am not a pessimist. I believe in America. I believe in the greatness of America. I was just out at Luke Air Force Base. Anybody who doesn't believe in the greatness of America, go out and see those men and women that are serving at Luke Air Force Base. But I am worried that for the first time in the history of this nation, we're gonna violate something that has been a tradition since our founding, and that is, the greatness of America is that every generation of Americans has handed off to the next generation a better nation than the one that they inherited. I cannot tell you that when we're carrying a $16 trillion debt that they're gonna have to pay for, a debt of something over $40,000 for every man, woman, and child in America. There's not a mayor here that would last six months in office if they did business the way we do in Washington. So all I can tell you is that, that, I will say this. Paul Ryan knows the budget better than anybody. And I believe that he has the mental equipment and the ability to, well, his, his budget. You may not like it. People say that some, some of it are bad. It's not Romney's budget. But Ryan's budget does have a way to get a, a budget back in balance. The President's budget does not have, which by the way, didn't get a single vote in the United States Senate, does not have anything but unending debts and deficits out there in the future. So why don't we act? We're gonna have to act. And if we don't act, then I say, "Throw the bums out." And find somebody. Go ahead. You wanted to respond to that.
I still, this question to me is, it's such an obvious, good plan. It's a skeleton of a plan. You can pick on little things on it. But it, no one in Congress is talking about, no one is saying, "This is a good plan." No one on Sunday is saying, "It's a good plan."
Actually, we do, a lot of us do say, "It's a good plan." But as soon as we do, there are portions of it which require sacrifice. Ah, so, you want to push Grandma over the cliff in the wheelchair, you know? My friends, a greatest example that I know is Medicare, okay? There's an outfit that are called Medicare Trustees. They say that the Medicare Trust Fund is going to be broke in the year 2024. No money left. No one disputes that. So what are we doing? What are we doing about it? Now, when Congressman Ryan, and I don't mean for town hall meetings to be partisan, and please forgive me if I sound like this, but Ryan does have a plan that if you are under age 55, and if you choose to, you can keep Medicare, traditional Medicare as it is. But if you choose to, you can have the option of having basically a system where you are given an insurance policy that you can decide what, what part of it and how, and what it costs. Now, one thing we have found, one is when there's competition, costs go down. And the other thing we have found, when people are making their own choices as to what kind of health insurance they want, that we do save money. So all I can say is that, and so what is, what is happening now? Ryan is gonna, you know, push Grandma over the cliff in the wheelchair. And that's, we can't stay, sustain what we have today. Medicare will not stand. So if somebody has a better idea than Ryan's, I'd love to hear it. But to just say, "Hey, we're gonna keep it like it is," we can't. Anyway. Next, sir.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Paul Smiley. I'm a 25-year Air Force combat veteran from Desert Storm. I'm also a small business owner here in the West Valley. We have a big problem coming, putting veterans back to work. My company, we've done our job. We've hired 58% of our employees are veterans. What can we expect from you and our Arizona delegation to help put veterans back to work?
Well, first of all, we have veterans' preferences. Second of all, one of the great shames of this country is the fact that we have 8.3% unemployment, but unemployment amongst veterans is 14%. That's not acceptable in America. We do have a GI bill which is incredibly generous. I know that because I have a son at Texas A&amp;M who is taking advantage of that. And that is, we have to encourage many of our veterans to go back to school when they leave. We also got to start this thing of job fairs. They have been succeeding, where we will get a whole bunch of employers together and advertise it in our veterans' community. And there are ways to advertise in the veterans' community, not only the traditional veterans' organizations, but government agencies that are in contact with veterans. And bring them down and let them interview and do that. I will agree with any idea or any proposal that needs to be made in order to make sure that our veterans have an opportunity to get a job. Which brings up one other issue real quick, and I know that you've been concerned about, and that's this issue of suicides. For some reason, which we really can't determine, suicide of active duty and of veterans continues to be on an increase. Now, traditionally, the thing that would make, pop into your mind is, well, it's because of combat stress. Well, over 30% of these suicides are people who have never been in combat. So it's obviously a more complex challenge than, than you would think automatically. But because, and another thing I don't understand very well, and maybe you can help me out, the Vietnam veteran, and there's some who are here, were not welcomed home by the American people. In fact, the treatment was disgraceful. And that contributed a lot to the failure of many of our Vietnam veterans to get all the way home. But we welcome our veterans now. We love them. We cherish them. We do everything we can for them. And still, this suicide rate continues on the increase. And we're spending lots of money trying to study it, but we still haven't been able to figure it out. But we've got to do whatever's necessary because you've got to stop. Thank you for your involvement with veterans. Yes, sir?
Thank you. My name is David Jones. I'm President and CEO of the Arizona Construction Association. On behalf of our members, we want to thank you for what you've done to help promote over 2,000 construction jobs that will come to Luke. In addition to that...
Another one I should have had introduced. Thank you.
In addition to that, Senator, there's some things that we would like to share with you today. And I think it dovetails on this gentleman's comments. First of all, we have been supporting for some time Rosemont Copper Project, which recently you've come out to say it's a good project that will put approximately 3,400 more construction people in southern Indiana to work.
Arizona.
In Arizona, I'm sorry. We also support the fact of the West Side Casino in development. That's 6,000 construction jobs, 3,400 permanent jobs. But what we're going through in America today, and especially in Arizona, we've lost 208,000 construction jobs. Construction is the second largest contributor to our state's stream, second only to, our state's revenue, second only to retail. But what's happening, the average worker in America, construction workers, 47 years old. And we aren't finding the interest today in youth because they have other options. But 51% of our infrastructures are need a repair replacement. We are now seeing signs in construction that growth is coming back. When it comes back, we're concerned we're not gonna have the people to fill those positions. And to your, six weeks ago, I sent a letter to your office. I've called the Veterans Administration. I think if we could coordinate an effort that those returning GIs that have a background in construction, whether they're truck drivers, whether they're bulldozers, bulldozers who are operators, equipment operators, that we could parallel and match them up regardless of where their home state is, that they might want to come to the Southwest for the quality of living. And we could serve a twofold purpose, putting people to work, we get some of these projects going, residential comes back, and we can welcome these people back with an outreach hand that says, "We've got a job for you."
Thank you very much. And we would like to spend some time with your organization trying to make these things happen. And I thank you for that. I think from conversations with our mayors, there's been a ray of light, would that be the best way to describe it as far as the state's economy is concerned? And finally, I'd just like to say that when we bailed out Wall Street, we took care of those people pretty well. We didn't take care of Main Street America. Financial institutions are doing fine. Main Street is still hurting. And I always believed that it was the housing crisis that started this. And by the way, people from, Fannie Mae and Freddie and these people, they should have gone to jail. That it'll be the housing stabilizing and starting to grow that'll bring us out of the recession. So I'm, I'm very, very guardedly optimistic. I don't know what's gonna happen in Europe, and I don't know what's gonna happen with the Chinese economy, and a lot of other things. But there is a chance that we may be coming out of, of the terrible, the longest recession in history since the Great Depression. Yes, sir?
My name's Carl Rissfeld.
And the next woman that raises her hand, I will recognize, okay? Go ahead.
Anyhow, I'm a server in the Air Force in the 60s. Yeah, old, older than you. But anyhow, anyhow, Social Security and Medicare are obviously of great interest to me. And we look at the way they were started, and everybody in this room other than a government employee pays into Social Security, not voluntarily, by the way, thank you very much. And we always paid into Medicare. And on top of that, after you retire and get Medicare, we pay a premium. And you may not know it, but there's a little known act called the Medicare Readjustment Act of 2007, where if you make over $180,000 a year as a joint filer, you have to pay additional premium. And that amount of money doesn't come from necessarily income. It's line 47, adjusted gross income. And it came from any source. We sold our house, or I paid off my house in 2009. I took the money out of a IRA, which paid Medicare and Social Security funds, and paid it off in 2009. 2010, we became Medicare eligible. And at the end of 2010, we got a letter from Social Security saying, "We have to pay an additional amount, almost $7,000 a year premium because our income was over the limit." Now, that income was, I saved that. Now, fortunately, we filed our 2010 taxes and went through government bureaucratic maze and finally got a refund for it. But that shouldn't happen. And the other thing on Medicare is that we all paid into it, and we're still paying premiums. But where's the, where's the fiduciary responsibility of the trustees to use this money as it was really intended to be used? And if we do redo and readjust Medicare, what's to say that the same thing's not gonna happen 20 years or 30 years from now? That time I won't be around. I won't care. But for the children and grandchildren. And that's the real problem. It's being used for things that really wasn't intended for. And that's why we got in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. You covered a lot of ground. First of all, the one thing that every American that I know supports is tax simplification. And it's only the special interests and the lobbyists in Washington that prevent that. Tax code is this high. Is there anyone here in this room that understands the tax code? No. And what we need is three tax brackets and two deductions. Deduction for charity, induction for your home loan mortgage. And you could fill out your income tax return on the back of an envelope. And that's what we need to do. The last time we fixed, simplified the tax code was 1986, then Senator Bill Bradley was the leader on that. Second thing, though, where we're in some disagreement is the cost of Medicare. Cost of Medicare is increased because the cost of health care increases. The cost of health care in America has gone up high single-digit or near double-digit, which is unsustainable. Now Obamacare was supposed to bend the, the health care curve down, as you might remember that language. It didn't. We're still experiencing nearly double-digit increases in inflation in health care. And we've got to get those costs under control. And it seems to me, one of the things, there's many things, buying, buying your insurance across state lines, medical malpractice, there's a whole lot of things. But incentives for people to practice healthy lives has been proven successful. Safeway has a program that if you have a healthy diet, that you don't smoke, that you get exercise, that you take a physical once a year, and you're in good shape, they give you money back. Guess what? Health care costs for Safeway have gone down. This is the kind of thing we need to provide the American people with incentives to have, to remain in good health. So the problems with Medicare are not gonna be solved until the problems with health care in America are solved, because a double-digit or high single-digit inflation associated with health care cannot continue forever. Yes, ma'am? Both of you? Yes?
Hi, Senator McCain. We're really appreciative of you taking your time to come and talk to us. And we appreciate your service. Thank you so much. I seen that a gentleman brought up the casino. I'm also going to bring that up. That was my purpose. I do appreciate the men who, and military, and Luke Air Force Base, and the F-35s coming in. Whoever managed to get that done, we appreciate that wholeheartedly. And I am from the City of Gillendale. My name is Francine Romesberg. I'm very involved. I have been researching the Tahoma-on-Aim project for the last two and a half years. And I actually spoke personally, one-on-one with Trent Franks the other evening, asking him... him about his bill. And he actually agreed with me on something when I stated the fact that this is all about money. It's about competition. So the GRIC, the Hea River Indian Community, they are actually in conflict of interest because they've even admitted that their actual, the problem with the Tahoma-Onum project is really simply, basically, bottom line, all about the money. It's about the competition. Right now, they promote themselves as being the only casino in the West Valley with the Tahoma-Onum coming in. They now will not be able to do that. The Hea River is also putting their project, which is the same type of casino, over a $100 million project expansion of Equava, which is about 45 minutes away. So they aren't even close to each other. So our question would be to you, Senator McCain, is what is your position on the casino?
My position is that, is the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act, that I was one of the authors, was the co-author of it, did not envision casinos outside of reservations. We believed very strongly, thanks to a Supreme Court decision called the CabaZon decision, that within Indian reservations, that they could have gaming, and that would be as a matter, an issue of tribal sovereignty. We did not envision tribes going out and buying property in the middle of or close to metropolitan areas and then turning them into casinos. That was not the intent of the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act. So I did not sign on to the Franks' bill. But I can tell you that the intent of the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act was that there would be contiguous land to the Indian reservation would be the places where they would build casinos. So now we have case after case of Indian tribes parachuting into metropolitan areas and buying up land in metropolitan areas and setting up casinos. That was not the intent of the act. And I can tell you that frankly and with total assurance, because I was one of those that wrote the act. Yes? Excuse me, this woman right there, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Senator McCain. It's such a pleasure to have you here, and I too thank you for your service, as well as all the other military in the audience. I personally did not serve, but my dad was in the Army Air Corps in World War II, and he just turned 94. And I've been so lucky to have him for just about 20 years since my mom died. I'm an only adopted child, so you can imagine how wonderful it is for me to still have him. But as the time ticks closer to 2014, my dad is really seriously concerned about the death panel element of Obamacare. And I was hoping that you could help me, so I could talk to him about, if you can, speak to what the Romney-Ryan plan will do to, you know, that and any other facet of Obamacare with their plan. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for your dad, and thanks for his service. The Obamacare, to start with, no matter what they tell you, no matter what you read, took $761 billion out of Medicare. So those Americans who are concerned about the long-term health of Medicare system, they took $761 billion out of Medicare to pay for Obamacare. And they can deny it all they want to, but I was there on the floor of the Senate, it's a matter of congressional record that we keep. The problem with these death panels is that these panels would be set up, and they would make decisions, basically, they deny this, but they are there to decide who gets what operation under what circumstance. And that's what they do. Now, again, you will hear saying, "No, they, they will only decide on what best practices are," et cetera, and they may do that. But I have never known a bureaucracy, and this one is basically unaccountable to anybody that didn't overstep its boundaries. That's why I'm very worried about it. But we need to repeal and replace Obamacare. The majority of the American people want to repeal and replace. We need to have medical malpractice reform. Any physician in this room will tell you that's honest, is that they prescribe extra tests and extra procedures because they fear of finding themselves in court trying to defend what they did. There are estimates that that's 5%, 10%, 15% addition to healthcare costs in America. We need to have any person in this room that wants health insurance to be, buy one in North Dakota if it's available to them. We also need, obviously, to place incentives for people not to use healthcare. Now, the system as it works today, as you know, is you pay a certain amount of money, and you get a certain amount of healthcare for free. So if, in other words, you paid your money, something happens to you, then that healthcare, with certain restrictions depending on what policy it is, is taken care of, no matter what the cost is, right? Suppose that I had a deal with Safeway, that I paid them a certain amount of money every month, and I could go down and get all the groceries that I wanted. Now, I would eat a lot differently, and so, and so would my dog. So, so what we have to do is we, one of the great things I thought about the Medicare Advantage Program, which Obamacare does away with, is we gave seniors choices as to how, what kind of healthcare they needed and what they wanted. Well, that was done away with. I don't think a federal bureaucrat should be making those decisions. You might be interested that there's already been 100,000 pages of government regulations printed as a result of implementing Obamacare. 100,000 pages. Next. Yes, yes, sir. I like your shirt.
My name is John Turberty. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. And my question is, I see these pictures of somebody pushing a wheelchair into the Grand Canyon. I'm also a member of the 89%, and I think Congress, in their inaction and everything else with this sequestration and the deficit, they're pushing strollers into the Grand Canyon. These young children aren't going to have the same benefits in this country that we had. And nobody seems to care in Congress. Maybe 11% do, but most of them don't. And as far as sequestration, I can't see anything happening to stop sequestration, if you could elaborate on that, because there's an election coming up, there's the holidays. I just don't see anything happening. Thank you.
Well, you mean, in the words of Chairman Mao, "It's always darkest before it's totally black." You're right to a degree, and Congress is gridlocked, and we're not doing anything about it. But I still believe that Congress responds to the will of the people. And that's why I've been traveling around the country and traveling around the state of Arizona, to try to get people aroused and angry enough and concerned enough about our nation's security that they demand we act. Now, maybe I'll fail, but I'll sleep a lot better if I know that I've done everything that I can to get the American people aroused enough to demand that we fix this. Nothing is more important than our nation's security. The long-term threat, as was pointed out, is our debt and deficit in our economy. In the short term, this cut, the sequestration, these dramatic cuts, will do what the Secretary of Defense and our Uniform Service Chiefs said. I finally would like to say that I have seen President Bill Clinton call Republicans over when we're facing a crisis and work things out. I saw President Reagan call leaders of Congress of both parties over and work things out. We need to do that this time, and that's what presidents are supposed to be for. Yes, sir?
I just had a really quick question, kind of getting back to the defense spending. Now that the F-35 is coming to Luke, I kind of wanted to get your thoughts on the cost of the program, and more specifically, if we've kind of turned the corner in keeping the cost down. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. I think we've turned the corner, but the cost overruns have been disgrace and a national outrage. It delayed by many years, and the costs overrun have been in billions of dollars. We have a huge problem in the Pentagon with the way that we acquire weapon systems. And the first fundamental problem is we give these cost-plus contracts. In other words, they bid, and yet they get a contract that if their delays or overruns, then the taxpayer pays for it. Suppose you had a leaky roof and hired a person to come and fix it, and it was a cost-plus contract. I doubt seriously if they would be completed on time. So we've got to, we've got to address that. But it really is a national disgrace that we have spent so much of the taxpayers' dollar. And my number-one priority has been for several years now is acquisition reform, so that we can go back to the days when we were able to build weapon systems on cost, on time. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Senator McCain, for being here. My question is, it seems like today that the current administration and his 36 czars are running the federal government. And I particularly relate that to the latest one of giving all these illegal immigrants their work permits, and the state of California is saying, "Now, rush and get your driver's license so you can vote." Now, the fair organization says up to 1.8 million of these illegals could be registered to vote this November. Could you comment on what's going on out there? And is the czars, the 36 czars, really running the federal government?
The czars have a lot of responsibility, and they have abated the role of Congress, the Senate, United States Senate of Advice and Consent. In other words, the United States Senate is supposed to approve or disapprove of these appointments, and they've gotten around these appointments by calling them czars or in charge, and they have not gone through the Senate process, and it's been disgraceful. The President of the United States should come forward with a plan for comprehensive immigration reform. He has not. He had the overwhelming majorities in both House and Senate in the first two years of his administration. He did not come forward with a single plan. When I and some others had immigration reform on the floor of the Senate, he was one of those that killed it. One of them, not the only one. So we need overall comprehensive reform, and the components of it, one of them has to be e-verify. Every citizen, it was a recommendation of the 9/11 Commission, every citizen have a tamper-proof identification card. It should also employ, have sanctions on employers who knowingly hire people who are in this country illegally. We should also have better border enforcement. Drugs are still flowing up to Phoenix, Arizona, and being distributed throughout the country. We need an agriculture workers program. Now, Yuma, Arizona, produces something like 70% of the lettuce consumed in America every winter, and they are having enormous difficulties getting workers. So we ought to have the old program where you can give someone an identification, they come and work, and then go back to, in this case, most of them, to Mexico. So we need to have those as fundamentals of this reform, and we need to move forward with it. We cannot stand a situation where there remains 20 million people, 12 million people residing in this country illegally. Sir, all the way in the back.
Senator McCain, I want to thank you for your service, not only in the military, but since then, I think you're a shining example of what a service to this country means.
Well, thank you. Could I, could I mention a recent incident? I was going through Sky Harbor Airport, and a guy ran up to me and said, "Hey!" He said, "Anybody ever tell you I look a lot like Senator John McCain?"
You bet.
And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Doesn't it sometimes just make you mad as hell?"
You bet. Well, obviously, with the numbers you were talking about earlier, 11% approval rating in Congress. In my lifetime, it seems like Congress is more fractured and more divisive than ever before, and I was hoping you could speak to why you think that is and how that can be turned around.
I think it's a variety of factors. I think a lot of it has to do with instant, 24-hour news, one-hour news cycles. I think it has to do with extreme dissatisfaction that people have over the way that the government operates. I think it has a lot to do also with gerrymandering, to tell you the truth. There are members of Congress that are in, that hold the congressional seat, their lifetime jobs, because they are carved out in a way that there's overwhelming majority in their party in that congressional district. I think that there is, I think there's a lack of, sometimes a lack of understanding that sometimes we may have to do something that is not overwhelmingly popular with your And I puzzle about it all the time, and I worry about it. I will say that one of the manifestations of it is that we are now seeing the increase in voter registration going to registration as independent. Many years ago, here in Arizona, independent registration was 5%, 10%. Now it's up to 30%, and the major increases in registration are independent, where people are dissatisfied with both parties. I don't know what's going to happen in America politically, but whenever enough people get dissatisfied enough, then they either form a new party, or they force one or both of the parties to reform. I think we're getting close to that point. I'm sorry I haven't got a better explanation. Yes, ma'am?
Some critics have said that the impacts of sequestration have been overstated, that it'll simply bring back the, you know, the budget to the 2007 Pentagon budget levels. So how would you respond to that?
Well, I'd like to ask them not to talk to me, but talk to the Secretary of Defense and, who was appointed by the President, and the service chiefs are military leaders. Maybe if they don't trust their word, who do you trust? And this is on top of $460 billion that are already being enacted. The Army, as I mentioned, is being reduced by 100,000, Marine Corps by 80,000 already. So there are significant cuts already in action. If you don't believe the service chiefs and Secretary of Defense, that is your right to do. I happen to believe them, and I think most Americans do too. Yes, sir?
Well, Senator, I'm just like everybody else, thank you so much for your distinguished career. I watched you over the last three or four years as the pundits and news people would ask you about what to do about underwater properties. And I agree with you that this is a major issue nationally, and I've been in this business for 25 years. For the past four and a half years, my wife and I have written books about this, and we had the absolute solution to this problem without refinancing anything and without having any appraisals. And I gave a copy of one of my books to your office manager. And I'd like to talk to you about that, if you have the time, at some point of your duration here.
Yes, sir. I would be glad to, because, as I said before, it was the housing crisis that started this recession, and when the housing stabilizes is when we're going to be starting out. I, and believe it or not, Hillary Clinton during the campaign, both made the same proposal, and that is to do what we did in the Great Depression. And that is to set up a bureaucracy in Washington called the Homeowners Loan Administration. And that group would do what they did in the Depression, and it'd go out and buy a mortgage from someone who's underwater, give them a mortgage back that they can afford to make the payments on. Now, that worked in the Great Depression. We ended up actually making money over many years' time for the Treasury. I still think, and I think some of our friends in the housing industry here will tell you, that all the focus went, and all the money went to Wall Street, went to bail out these major institutions, many of them who weren't even in the home loan business. And so they did fine. They're doing fine. They have been record profits. And yet, our housing industry and our real estate industry, which is one of the major components, as you well know, of Arizona's economy, continues to stagger along with a little, a little ray of sunshine out there, according to the mayors that I talked to. One more? Well, old friend?
Senator, like everybody else, I wanted to thank you. I'm also a Vietnam-era veteran. But 30 years, over 30 years ago, there was a young congressman that led me through HHS to start a health center in South Phoenix. And that was Congressman McCain at the time. And back then, we were using National Health Service Corps docs, we were keeping the cost of healthcare low. We had facilities that's still there now. Started with one doctor, but now it's 75 doctors. There's a unit in Tallahassee- There's a unit in Tolleson, Tempe, Maryville, and East Phoenix. And I know the health care debate, because everybody's caught up in it. But back then, we kept the cost for everybody low. We had doctors that were new doctors, but very competent doctors. We had pharmacists included in there that were subsidized by the federal government, but it was not, it was cheaper than sending people to the emergency care. And we don't have that today, or I don't hear about it. But you were very successful in helping us to grow to 300 staff, 75 doctors, and keeping insurance low. We had third-party patients. We had sliding fee scales for the patients that couldn't afford to pay, and everybody was getting quality care. Not everybody, but everybody could come into the center. And I don't hear that as part of the debate.
Well, it should be, and it is a great success story. And people who never would have received help, received it through this program, and I'm very grateful for you and all of your associates. That is one of the components that we need. Community health centers have been successful all across America. And I'm sorry to say that a lot of the funding for community health centers was cut off, and that was unconscionable, in my view. Could I say that I want to thank my friends, the mayors and the city council, those that are closest to the people, those that I can't, they can't blame the President or the other party. They have to answer directly to the people, and they have my sympathy, and I want to assure you, your reward, your reward will be in heaven, not here on earth. So thank you again for all you do. I thank you all for coming today, and I want to say that these are still difficult times in the state of Arizona. These are difficult times in the country. But every time I go, I went to see the Army guys at Fort Wachukka the other day. I saw the Marines yesterday in Yuma, and our folks out at Luke today. Every time I get a little depressed, I try to go and be around those young people who are serving our country with such distinction. Every Fourth of July for the last 12 years, I've either gone to Baghdad or to Kabul to spend Fourth of July with our troops. And it's an inspiring and humbling experience. I go quite frequently out to Walter Reed in Bethesda to see our wounded. And when I see them going through the rehab with their prostheses and the attitude that they have of incredible optimism, and it's amazing to me. So when I get angry and upset and frustrated with Harry Reid and all, and some of my Democratic friends, I think about what a great nation we are, and there are many people in this room who also served, and you are their inspiration of the ones who are serving now. So I am grateful to you. I look forward to seeing you again, and it's hard trying to do the Lord's work in the city of Satan, and it's wonderful to be home on a recess. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. (applause)